Here.
Be this called order at six oh three, please stay seated for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming. We are being broadcast live on Van Buren television to YouTube and will be rebroadcast on our cable channel. And we will continue to do that through March, based on the Senate and the House's new vote tonight, which approves us through March. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Yes, trustee Boynton.
Yeah.
Trustee Frazier. Trustee Frazier?
Sherry, you're mute. Sherry, you're unmute.
She's here. Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
That. Macamair, treasure.
Treasure Bud.
Yeah, here.
Clerk is present. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Supervisor.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
We have a call.
Thank you.
Can I get you trustee Martin?
Yes, you did. I remember him saying this. Okay, today, the executive summary. Today, the consent agenda, which is basically the agenda which we've all agreed to vote yes on, consists on the board meeting minutes, the prepaid list and the voucher list. There were also appointments for myself supervisor McNamara to the LDFA and appointed to the DDA. Treasure Bud is being appointed to the planning commission and to the South Huron Valley Utility Authority, or one of our wastewater groups. Clerk Wright is going, of course, to the election commission, and he's also going to continue on the recreation commission. Trustee Miller is going to the election commission, and she is also going to help us over in the September Day's endowment committee. Trustee Frazier will be working on the water, the water and sewer commission. Trustee Martin will be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and he will help out on the election commission. And trustee Boynton will be serving as the newest member on the environmental commission. Today, during the presentations, we are going to be saying goodbye to Chief Amy Brow, who's retiring. Our new discussion, our new business items include discussions on French Landing Park and a discussion on hazard payouts to all township employees and public safety. And also about direct mailing of masks to all township residents with the corresponding amendment to the COVID expense line item. That's all I have. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Supervisor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Please, okay. All right. Is there a discussion on the adoption of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bye.
Sorry, yeah, I keep on forgetting. I hate this part.
I'd have a roll call.
Roll call, please, clerk.
You're muted clerk.
Ready? Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Boynton.
Yes.
Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next is adoption of the revised consent agenda. Trustee Martin, would you please make the motion?
Make a motion that we adopt a consent agenda consisting of number one, board meeting minutes of December first, 2020. Number two prepaid list of December third, 2020. Number three prepaid list of December 10th, 2020. Number four voucher list of December 15th, 2020. Number five approval of the Board of Trustees Committee Commission appointments.
Support.
Thank you, Ms. Bud, treasure Bud. Is there any discussion or removal? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Boynton.
Yes.
Treasure Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We, while you go ahead and get Amy and our public safety people ready, I will start going through the list of announcements that I have to make. And the first one is rather important. It's awful. We have a retiring judge. But Judge Parrott has sent us a letter as a board. And he say, he's basically saying honorable members of the Board of Trustees, seasons greetings and happy holidays to all of you, to all of you. For over thirty-four years, I have called Van Buren Township my home. As my judicial career comes to a close, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for the honor of being allowed to serve our community together with you. It has truly been my pleasure and a genuine privilege to have worked with all of you and your predecessors toward making Van Buren an even better place to live. Our great residents deserve nothing less. During my eighteen years in the bench and nine years before that on the Water and Sewer Commission, as well as through my work with civic and community organizations, I have been committed to this common goal. Although I am retiring from government service, my deep admiration and respect for our community and its people means that I'm not retiring from public life. If there is anything I can do to continue contributing to Van Buren's betterment, please do not hesitate to call me. Thank you once again for all that you do and to our residents for their support. Sincerely, David Parrott, District Judge. He's leaving us. BT has also got a tree trimming project going on right now. They're basically saying, we're hearing you, we're moving in. If anybody's got, please let these people onto your yards. It is imperative to try and stop some of these incredible outages. The Van Buren Township Downtown Development Authority is putting out a nice big concrete bed for, and a local guy could win it. We're going to be redoing a lot of the sidewalks throughout the DDA. Eight thousand square feet of concrete, two hundred and twenty-five linear feet. You know, if you're a concrete company in our town, please get over there and bid it. We'd like to keep. Also, there's another three and a half million dollar grant going through Wayne County. It's for the beverage service industry. We are finding that people are winning these things when they apply for them, so please apply for them. We want our people to get through this if possible. Last, next thing I wanted to mention, the red blood, the Red Cross is having another blood drive, and they're going to do it here. If you want to, you can give us a call to supervisor's office or call one eight hundred Red Cross. They need blood badly, and we've been doing a good job of getting it to them. But they're going to be here January seventh, more than seven. And Forgotten Harvest is hosting a special holiday food giveaway Monday, December twenty-first, Monday, December twenty-first, from nine AM till noon, while supplies last, by the way. It's available outside of our senior center. And there'll be holiday themed foods. I'm thinking Am's and turkey probably, and pies, I hope, for people. Yeah, but if, you know, this has become a huge event. Probably over four hundred is now with this event. It's amazing what we've done with this group, and we're very happy that they're with us. And that's all I have. We're now over to Amy.
Chief Amy. Supervisor.
Yes.
Before we start, Amy, I guess I just would like to make sure that the folks know at home that the treasurer's open, office will be open on December thirtieth by law to collect taxes, and the doors will be open from nine to five on December thirtieth. Anything that is put in the drop box outside and anything that is mailed and it gets to us before December, January fourth, when we come back, will be credited to the folks that have made those payments for the year 2020.
And I know clerk Leon Wright's got something.
Yeah, I have a letter. I have a letter I would, I have to read because I don't get these letters, so. We normally don't get them, especially during the election cycle. But this letter received to the clerk office, election appreciation, the subject of election appreciation dated December night. It's from Stacy Wayne Coe. Dear Clerk Wright, I'm just writing you to express my appreciation for everything you and your office has done this year for the residents of Van Buren Township. I had written you earlier before election regarding issue with the friend voter registration. I wrote you after business hours, after business hours ended, and did not expect a response for a few days. From my past experience writing in a government official in other cities I live in, I was surprised to hear from you the same night. And the next business day, an associate in your office contacted me, first thing to get a resolve. Along with that, your office insurance postage was paid for mail and voting and releasing constant information about where, how, and when to vote during these difficult times was extremely appreciated. I know elected and government officials have been under a lot of extra scrutiny and strain, so I just wanted to take the time and let you know I appreciate your work for many years of that, and that many, well, your work for many of us in Van Buren Township. You earned my vote by placing the citizen's ability to have safe and secure and accessible elections at the forefront. And your quick response to my concerns and issue really showed me what it looks like to be well served by any government official. I kept thinking about how busy your office must have been at the time, but you still found time to very quickly address my issue. Truly something I had not seen before moving here. Thank you again sincerely, and a late congratulation on continuing, you'll continue in turn. I know VVT is in good hands with a leadership like yours. Sincerely, Stacy Wayne Coe. Stacy, I really appreciate this. I don't get it often. It's a thankless job, but it's a well, it's a much needed job as well as any, all of us that's in here. We don't get these letters a lot, so thank you. Appreciate it.
You also probably wanted to mention your toys and coats.
Well.
You should.
I, I, I set it out if I can, if I can find it right quick. Let's say, okay, I was just.
Later if you want to.
We are, every year, every year I do a coat for school kids, so everyone knows, and this is my eighth or ninth year doing it. It started off real small, but it's grown because of the vendors and the, that we have that works along with, not only in Van Buren Township, that works along with Van Buren Township. They are really open hearted and they do it, open their wallets up every year to help out. So this year, the schools are closed, we all know. So I reached out again to the, all the schools, elementary and middle schools of Van Buren Township, and I, we came up with fifteen families that we're going to donate coats, scarves, gloves, and each, we secured enough money to give each one, each family a two hundred and fifty dollar gift certificate. So that's going to be going out tomorrow to these fifteen families. And then also, I got, I received an email from Sovereign Partners about a week ago, asking me, could I use about, at that time, she said seventy-five to one hundred and twenty-five tours, gifts, games. And I said, of course. They wanted, they had a sticker, they wanted to make sure that these gifts, these, these tours were given out in Van Buren Township. So I said, yeah, I could use them along with my coast for kids program. So I accepted those. A couple of days later, she was counting and going through, and she said, I miscounted. There's about four hundred, five hundred tours and games and things, so. I have a election trailer that's filled with games and tours that will be sit, that will be sit out in front of the township on Thursday from ten to two, and that's the first come, first served. The Van Buren Township residents come by to pick out a gift of your choice and tell they, while supplies last. Again, that's from ten to two on Thursday. Amy, I will be there at twelve, but from ten to two, I'll be passing out tours.
Clerk Wright, can you mention the ages of the toys range?
Toys ranges from two to eight, years of age, from two to eight.
Thank you.
Okay, toy giveaway. Okay, does anybody else have an announcement that they want to make before we get onto the festivities? Hearing none, I guess I'll just start it off because there's a lot of people that want to talk about Chief Amy Brow. But since supervisor usually gets to blame us, it goes bad, I'm taking the credit for not going bad. It went well. When, yeah, she's done, she's, she's basically brought a new level of professionalism and training to our, to our forces down there at the fire station. And she brought a new, she, you know, she brought a new higher standard to them. To the point where, quite frankly, my union door was going like a revolving door for a while there with people that were getting fired, getting long times off, and what I've heard about, what I said, Amy, you gotta let up on them. No, you can't. You gotta, you need, you need to be hard and they'll learn to do it right, and when they get it all right, they're going to be better for it. We went through a lot of people and I, and I was really scared of it, but the most amazing part to me was when I talked to the union people, including union leadership, they backed Amy on these things. They backed her a hundred percent and said, she's right. They broke the rules, that is the rule, and they, and they should, this is what has to happen. We have one of the, I never see any more union stuff coming in the last year because you set a very high standard. You force them to live up to it. I'm really, it's amazing. Now, when I, I hired her, I said that, you know, as long as you provide good training and stuff like that, you're good. The only thing that'll get you fired is if you ever bring up the word full-time fire. There's no way I'm going to full-time fire, no way I'm going to full-time fire. Here we are, four years later. You've gotten both of your fire departments rebuilt. You got new trucks, you got a new ladder truck, and you got full-time fire. And you know, the irony is, one time we were in negotiations and we were not, we were getting pretty hot about it, about some stuff. And Amy had the gall to look at me and say, you're always trying to balance this township's back on the backs of the firefighters. I said, two full-time. So I went kind of a little bit nuts at that moment, but um. It's just a pleasure to have you here. I mean, you know, people are going to talk about woman and woman and everything else like that. To me, you were just the greatest fire chief we possibly could have had. You were wonderful. You set a new standard. You rebuilt this place. I proudly tell people that we have one of the most modern fire departments in the state of Michigan. I did not have heard of one better. And I believe, and I believe and tell them I have the best fire chief in the state, and I'm really sorry to see you go. And the last thing you did before your life left was you mentored our new fire chief, so I'm very happy for that, too.
Thank you.
Greg, would you like to go next?
I am a mission.
I sure would. Amy, first, I want to congratulate you on your second and maybe last retirement in your fire service career.
Definitely last.
Now, we'll see. In your short time here, you've had such an impact on how we deliver service to our community. You showed a strong work ethic and several projects you took on during your career here to include, first of all, updating our first line engines and ladder truck, which desperately was needed. You were instrumental in transforming six of our paid-on-call firefighters to six full-time firefighters that we thought we'd never get. Last and certainly, but not least, you provided a path by mentoring and having a succession plan in place for an internal candidate upon your departure someday. You certainly left your signature on this department and its members, and I thank you for that. Now it's time for you to enjoy your retirement. I wish you the best in the next chapter of your life, and don't forget, you always have your extended family here in Van Buren Township.
Thank you. Thanks.
Supervisor.
Go ahead. Sherry.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to say thank you for a job well done, so professional and so, such a leader for women. I mean, it's just been an honor to have you as part of our township. And we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Supervisor. Chief, Chief Amy. You know that I had the pleasure of sitting on the, on the committee when we, when we looked at the applications to, to hire. And it wasn't a hard choice to make after seeing your credentials. And also to bring something different to the Van Buren Township. It wasn't a hard choice. It was a great looking resume and also a great looking career that you, that you have done not only in Ann Arbor, but here in Van Buren Township, to borrow some professionalism to the, to the, to the fire department, created some, something that we needed, that we all worked hard for, and we struggled to get it, but you saw that board, and we brought, we brought it to the township, and I think we're going to be good and for doing so. I would like to commend you for the work that you've done, the things that you achieved since being here in the township, the progress that you, that you brought for in the township, and wish you nothing but happiness in your endeavors. And you also, you always have a friend, switch out and give me a call whenever needed. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk Wright.
Chief Wright, you have a.
Yep, just waiting my turn. Everybody can hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, Amy, this is for you. You've been a very good friend the short time that we've had together. I mean, I know you've been here for a while, but it would have been nice to probably spend at least ten or fifteen or twenty years as counterparts, and we're not able to do that. We're both further along in our careers, I guess, so. But I, I'm very happy for you and Carol, and congratulations. You made a big impact here at the fire department and at the police department. We've had, you and I have had a lot of conversations, work related, working through things at the police department and the fire department. And then we've also had a lot of personal conversations, which you've been very helpful to me on a few personal issues, looking for advice from you, so. I wish you the best and sorry to see you go, but I'll be fishing somewhere very close to your place. So I'll see you not too, we're not too far apart up north, so.
Looking forward to meet my brother.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak before David does a presentation?
Through the chair.
Treasure Bud.
Um, I hate goodbyes. I think everybody knows I hate goodbyes, so we're not going to say goodbye. We're just going to say, we'll see you around. I think that's what they say. You know, I've known Amy since she started out. I've known David since he started out, and it's just been my privilege to watch both of these people growing to be such marvelous adults and such good examples for, for all of us. Amy, can't thank you enough.
Stop.
David, good luck to you. I know you've got it. Just know that we're all here for you. We have your back. Amy, if you ever need me, you know where I am. David, you know where we all are, and we are here to support what you do for the fire. Thank you both so very, very much.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Trustee Martin. Chief Brow, I just want to, once again, thank you for your service to the township. Thank you for your leadership, for your friendship, for your honesty, and I wish you, I wish you and Carol well in the future. Hopefully, we'll see you, we might even come up north ourselves. I don't fish, but I like to eat fish.
We can do that.
Thank you, thank you for your, for your leadership or your, your, the training that you have provided and for mentoring to the new chief, Mr. McNally, Chief McNally, and we just appreciate you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
Chief Brow, it really saddens me that you're leaving. It's bittersweet. Like I said last week, you've been with us since two thousand and seventeen, and it was wonderful getting to know you personally. We worked on that opioid forum, spent the entire summer getting, preparing for that, and I got to know Chief Brow on a one-to-one level, and it was wonderful working with her and her extensive experience and knowledge not only helped lead her department, but it increased the level of service for our residents. Doing that forum was such a pleasure and an honor, and it's a memory that I will keep forever, and you made me a better person doing it, so I thank you for that.
We'd like to hear first from David, Chief, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Boynton.
Chief Brow, I, I know I'm the new kid on the block, but, and I know we really don't know each other all that well, but I, I, I can say this, just from hearing all that I've heard since being elected to the board, I, I can say that it is most deserved that we, we, we thank you for your endless patience, for your motivation, and for your persistence, to say the least. You have certainly helped the township become the township that it is today. Your, your, your golden phase is about to start. May God bless you to fulfill all your personal aspirations through your retirement and live your dreams as much as you and all your family can.
Thank you.
Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Amen.
Soon to be fired chief McNally.
Well, I can't say anything that they haven't already said, other than, obviously, we started many, many years ago together. You left and came back, and you basically, you know, whipped me into shape, so, well, so to speak. I mean, we still got some things to work on there, but anyway. What we've got, I have to step way back here because this is very big. It won't, it won't get all the way on the screen, but anyways, I will bring it up closer for you to see. First way to see here, the passage so forth on this is presented to Chief Amy Brow. Congratulations on your retirement, and this really means what it says here. You have touched a lot of lives with your dedication service of Van Buren Township. You will be missed January fourth, 2021. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just would like to say that, you know, all the steps that we went through, I appreciated the board being there. I also appreciated Greg and Jason also being there to be there to sound off and, and but somebody that's, I, I know they're listening tonight, but I want the board to know that you got one hell of an HR person. Nicole Sumter. She takes a lot. She works hard every day for that township. She's, she's a really good HR person, and I hope you keep her. I've, I've enjoyed my time in Van Buren. I can't thank you enough for allowing me to fulfill my dream of becoming a fire chief. I am sorry that, that life has a strange way of working out, and it's best for me to retire, and it was a good time to go, and I knew Dave was ready, so. I can't thank you all enough, and thanks for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thursday, right, on Wednesday?
Yep, Thursday.
We'll see you Thursday, and thank you very much, chief.
Okay.
Senator Carroll. All right, so we're going to be moving on. Sorry, let me get caught up here. Where are we at? Public comment. We're at public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on any of the issues of today? Moderator?
I'm not seeing any virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Before we move on, let me, I forgot something. I, I need to mention that the township will also be closed from December the twenty-first through January the third. We shut down for the holiday, the Christmas and our New Year's holiday. It's December twenty-first through January third.
All right, thank you very much. We have no unfinished business. We're moving right into a new. All right, thank you very much. Um, we have no unfinished business. We're moving right into uh new business. Um, it new business is a discussion on French Landing Park. I don't think there's a motion involved in this.
There's no handouts or attachments either, correct? I didn't see any.
It's only because it's it's a general discussion because yeah.
Okay.
Because we 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 put money into funds, and we've been just clean brush, but let's. So I wanted to get this out so we talk and get ideas and something. We don't have workshops anymore. Go ahead, uh Mr. Best, Director.
Thank you. Uh a- and as you are aware, well, first, let me say, uh I would like to personally uh thank uh Chief Brown. She's actually made me a better manager by uh mentoring me a little bit too and a lot of things that I wanted to thank on her retirement. So thank you, Chief Brown. Uh, as the board is aware, about two years ago, we started or three years ago, we started working on Quirk Park. And during the Quirk Park project, uh we looked at other parks that we could also do similar projects uh for the community to improve our parks. One of the parks that majority of our residents go by every day and drive by every day is the French Landing Park. It's extremely visible for most of the residents that live on the south side of nine ninety-four, as well as it's a destination for people outside of our community who 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 use that park regularly for fishing and to see the dam and to access our beautiful. And so it I'm gonna share my screen here. Let's see, of course, it's not where I want it to be. Those, as you will remember, in two thousand nineteen, Public Services Department came to you with an idea. This idea involved the cleaning up of trees and brush to improve French Landing Park. And we identified areas uh to thin out the trees and to really clean up the view shed. And so Area One had all the areas had were full of vines and poison ivy and other things. We then spent uh the after your approval on this project, we contracted with Russell Design, who was the township's uh landscape architect, as well as uh natural community design, and we hired, and that firm does a uh natural removal of vegetation as well as physical removal vegetation. And we came up with uh a removal plan, and if you've been to French Landing Park, you can actually see a dramatic dramatic difference. Where you drive by the park before, you couldn't see in these areas here uh where the uh cul-de-sac is the turnaround, and you couldn't even see the park or the lake from the road. Now, as you drive by, you can see the lake, you can see the cul-de-sac, and you can actually see there's a park there. At this point, uh the supervisor and other board members have gave some input on this, and we then went to work on the master plan. When Mark Russell, the lands or the township's landscape architect or landscape architect is here to talk about that a little bit, if you have questions, but in to keep it brief, as you will remember, I'm hoping that I can show you the right one. Can you guys see the French Landing Master Plan? The park master plan, is it there?
Yep.
Okay. But we developed a master plan for the entire park, and Russell Design put this together with the input that you gave at a at a meeting that we had, and also from input from residents who came to our uh township master plan meetings that had given comments. And basically, the idea for the park, as you recall, was to get create a destination that's different from all the other parks, because this park is unique. It's next to our dam. It's next to the lake. So the idea was to couch this as the backyard of our cot the township's cottage on the lake. And so we create, we planned additional parking, additional landscaping, uh pavement improvements for walkways, as well as, at the time, we had talked about putting a canoe launch in, but then a very extensive boardwalk and seating uh along the water, as well as places to sit and near the water for uh games, as well as making it very attractive from the road. At that point, we brought in uh once again, the township's landscape architect, Russell Design, and worked with community, natural community services, and did some plantings in the areas along the road and some additional tree removals in this area. So we actually installed uh large swaths of native plants, grasses, and wildflowers, which are right now growing as we speak, as well as through selective cutting, removed some additional trees to improve the growth of that uh those native plants and wildflowers, but also to increase the as as uh as someone has been quoted as saying, the wow appeal of the property. Uh like a re you know, it has curb, this park has lots of curb appeal, and it shows, uh it'll show as each step moves forward. Uh, once we've done this thinning out, the lands the township's landscape architect, Russell Design, put together the plan I'm here to talk about uh in in uh tonight, which really focuses on the bones of the park. Now, while we still have ideas about what to do in the park specifically with uh signage, equipment, um things that really need to some additional thought, the bones of the park are pretty static. There are things that we know we need to improve them and build on them uh so that when we're ready to do the next step in Phase Two, we'll be able to do that. And so uh working with Mark and his team, uh Marty, and and his team over at Russell Design, the sidewalk areas will be uh our plan to be installed in the Phase One. Improvement of the uh lawn areas, as well as lands additional landscaping and paving, and the construction of a very uh unique tensile structure. It's it's almost like a fancy tent, and I'll show you a picture of it, so that there's currently a user group out there that does outdoor yoga. And there are also other recreation groups that wanna meet and senior groups that wanna meet outside. This will be a perfect location for them to have outside with a roof over their head, uh the ability to access power and to see the lake. So this is the perfect, i- if someone wants to have a barbecue or picnic, they can also do this here. But those are the bones. So let me show you the plan, and we can uh I can just have um talk very briefly about what we're what we're really focusing on in the Phase One, which is uh wh- what we're gonna be moving in twenty twenty-one to to build the boat to re-improve the bones. As you can see from this, we're not touching anything in this side of the park, because this part of this side of the roadway, because this is where uh our future sign, if you guys remember from before COVID started, the Gateway Sign Project. You guys remember that? We are working with Ideation Orange out of Royal Oak and our huh landscape architect, Russell Design, to help site and place a a a sign that matches our design that we've agreed on as a and we'll be bringing a sign for this location, as well as additional plantings and trees in the future. And we've left this part alone, but we've improved the view. So now you can see how great it is gonna be inside. And now that this part is, we're gonna remove the topsoil and the uh the turf here. We're going to improve improve that, re-sod it. And then all the areas that you see that have existing pavement, we're gonna remove those and put new pavement in in these shade dark shaded areas. And on the next sheet, as you can see, those pathways will have landscaped areas. As you can see in this planting bed, very similar to what is over at uh Quirk Park. And this area here will be a a large paved area for meetings, classes, exercise groups. Uh so and this pathway will be built to access the cul-de-sac, the parking, the bathrooms that are already there, and the existing uh walkway that's out there. Oh, there's one more thing. Oh, and as you can see from this, and I'll zoom in so that it can be seen a little bit better, and I'm gonna email you guys this. Um, now that I've got a more finalized copy. There's a substation there that's really not attractive. I actually met today with DTE, and I'm working on uh a permit that will allow us to have an easement for landscaping and artwork that can be placed around the substation, so we won't have to see it anymore. But that's noted here that there's gonna be some plantings on this side, and then potentially art, our idea is to have some type of local artwork on this side. Uh, as you can see, the pathways have um vegetation all the way around the edges, as well as benches. And this Phase One work also includes the tensile structure. Now, we haven't finalized the tensile structure, but this is, I'm hopefully you could be be able to see this. Did it change over to the tent? Yes. So um Mark, I know you're on um. It I'd like to let you talk about why this is a great fit for the park.
Sure, thanks, Matt. Uh I I take a couple of things. Matt mentioned early that uh this park is unique in its location and its proximity to the lake, uh which many parks uh can't boast, and I I think that what we have here uh is a, i- if you recall, the Quirk Park shade structures that we have around the splash pad uh are suns uh suns sails, shade sails, and uh those provide a a little bit of respite from the from the you know, the hot summer sun. This would be a permanent structure, and if you recall, also at Quirk Park, those shade sails come down in the wintertime. Not that they need to, but a- and they are designed to to weather the storm and and hold the load of snow. Uh but they, you know, I guess it um gives you a little bit more longevity with those shade sails. These structures uh shade, these tensile structures are actually um designed to to stay up permanently. Um, and a couple of things that it provides, and and if you can scroll down a little bit more, Matt, you know, you can see that it's fifty-two feet uh square, if you will, uh in both the A and the B dimensions uh down at the bottom left of the of the image. The image in the middle, uh where you see the couple of people there, you know, it's quite high at at the uh H three, the dimension of that is almost thirty feet high. So what that gives you, I think, is is a nice image for the road uh and sort of that that sail, if you will. Um, you know, and and I think a little bit more of a connection to the water waterfront that we have there at French Landing. Uh but the unique unique architecture of it, I think, provides an amenity that the park and many parks, really, quite honestly, municipal municipal parks don't have. Um, and you see more of this uh sort of a shade structure uh in more of a civic or urban environment. Uh, and this will give, I think, a little bit of the unique quality to the park and not only um mitigate some of the sun uh uh conditions that we have, but provide that covering like Matt was Matt was talking about in the gathering areas for the outdoor groups. But uh, you know, the the fabric uh is built of a of a sturdy material that will withstand not only the uh uh inclement weather, snow loads, what have you. Uh, we're working with their structural engineers at this company uh to design that for the Michigan climate. And prior to all of our uh development of our construction drawings, we we received soil borings uh in these in this location, so we understand what the subterranean um topography looks like, and we're able to provide that information to the uh tensile structure folks, so they can help us engineer that uh to withstand snow load, uh wind uplift, and uh and just, you know, the compression that you would get from from the uh various uh weather that that will overcome. So I I think it's unique. Um, I, you know, we work with Matt and Elizabeth on this, and and I think it's kind of an it's 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 different than what you'd normally see. If you recall what we did or what was at the concession area at the uh Quirk Park, you know, it's sort of your standard sort of a look, gazebo kind of a look, and we also incorporated a smaller gazebo that that complemented uh the existing structure. This gives it, I think, a little bit more zip uh to your uh to the park and a little bit more connectivity architecturally to the to the riverfront.
Thank you. So there's there's just a few other um pieces that I wanted to outline here um with for uh for you. Um, one of the reasons why we really like the tensile structure and the height of it is where it sits. It sits away. It it'll have a very good view from the lake and from the road, so you'll be able to see it from both ways. Right now, a lot of the classes and activities are taking place on top of these L engineered septic field, because it's the flat location on the site that's um not under any tree branches or debris. We believe that we can utilize the space under the tensile structure to better uh give those people uh uh a space uh for three seasons, as well as the the areas here and here are going to be leveled out and and uh uh leveled out and uh re-sodded or re-seated. And there we're also exploring, because this park is more of a uh passive users park, it's more for enjoyment of the lake, we're actually looking at uh uh irrigation system for this park, so that the um the grass can be really well maintained and taken care of with a pump to the lake and things like that, so that this park would could be a real jewel uh for uh our park system and the users, the type of users that are there. Um, this is uh with with the uh, and this is something that this is just a very, very rough estimate uh that Mark and his team put together, but the total price for the Phase One, the items that we talked about today are about four hundred and eleven thousand. That includes the the tensile structure and the plantings and the pavement and the removal of everything that's there. Uh, our budget and the money that we have set aside already in the approved budget is is uh about we have a we have about fifty thousand more in our budget than what our estimate is, so we're very comfortable right now with where our design. Uh, this would be part of Phase One, as I said. Phase Two. Let me get to the right page. Phase Two would could could even happen in twenty twenty-one still as well. It's a very um looking at the the vegetation in the areas that we've cleaned up and making it uh and and making the, once the bones are in, we would go back and look at what vegetation we need to add here, but we're waiting until the sign is done, because the vegetation for this uh what we want the sign, the depending on what the sign shape and looks like will determine the vegetation we need to put in, as well as the the gardens type atmosphere and the topiary type of landscape we wanna put in along the road, uh kinda to make it look very inviting and and beautiful. Uh, we're kind of waiting to get the bones in because this area might get used as staging, and so we're taking a very step-by-step approach. Uh, at that point, um Mark, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I think you you covered the uh the irrigation, which I think is gonna be paramount to the success of this uh piece of property. Uh, and you know, thankfully, we've got quite a bit of water adjacent to it. Uh, I think also in maybe a subsequent phase, maybe it's not Phase Two, uh but uh Matt had mentioned that we would have an accessible kayak launch or canoe launch, you know, up at the northern end of the park, uh which is is kind of unique. I mean, it allows people with some physical disabilities to access their uh canoe or kayak and the ability to get out on the water safely and and comfortably on and not only to exit, but also to enter back uh to that uh to that same launch. Uh, we we also developed a few parking spaces to the left or to the east of the uh existing entry road, uh and down there by the by there, but right in there, Matt, yep. Uh, and we'd like to make those paved spaces as well. One of the things that we see and have recognized in the park uh as we've been out there for several times is that a lot of people park underneath the trees. As we've been out there for several times is that a lot of people park underneath the trees. And we'd like to really stop that and working with NCS. It's just causing some issues with the existing trees that we have. And they're mature trees. They're, they're, you know, probably thirty-six, forty-two inches in diameter. You know, cottonwoods and some other hardwoods that we have in there that I, that I think, you know, we'd like to preserve. And working with, with the supervisor McNamara, we. Wanted to maintain those views into the park as you come off of the overpass on ninety-four. And traveling south on Hagerty, you've got really neat views into the park and we want to try to maintain those. You know, forever. But along with that, and Matt mentioned a little bit about plantings along Hagerty Road. I think we want to try to also incorporate some sort of fencing. We don't know exactly what that looks like. We've got a couple of images. If Matt, you keep scrolling down a little bit, you probably have to zoom out, but. You, you can see that right, right there in the lower right-hand corner. You know, just something a little tasteful and gives you a little bit of separation. You know, we certainly provide some safety if kids are going to. You know, run about and what have you, but. Create some continuity along, along Hagerty Road that I think is missing. Right now, we have trees that are, are there currently. Some have been a little bit abused by DTE and their pruning methods. But it, it would be important to us and Matt and Elizabeth to create some sort of an edge there. Physical and visual, visual edge that gives it some continuity and connectivity along Hagerty Road. That recognizes that, that, that is the park. It's, it's starting point and it's, and it's entry point. And this will be tied into whatever the ideation orange folks come up with for their signage. But it gives you a nice elegant. You know, look along the edge of the park, but also gives you, you know, some quality materials that will last the test of time.
And, and thank you, Mark. The last phase of this is going to end up being the boardwalk. And while we're not, while we're not talking about it, I, I kind of. Wanted just to kind of. Whoa, show you. These pictures a little up close. Let's see here. So this walkway that's being put in eventual, that was just an idea. Coming out from the boardwalk to get people out into the lake a little bit more. But the really cool thing is along the edge. This is actually in phase three, the idea, and these are done in cities and Mark raved about these and I, I thought these were really cool. These are actually seating that's fixed. Through the, the line and there's actually a bar top, I guess, is the best way to describe it. Top on here and you can sit and have, have lunch or. Have, have a nice cold lemonade. Or you can enjoy a Starbucks drink. Out here along the water in a, and not have to bring a chair. And this is one of those, and it wouldn't be the, along the whole edge, but there's a section of it that it will work perfectly at. So it, it's something that we're looking at for phase three, but. At this point, I didn't want to go too far. I'd be, Mark is here and I am here. Elizabeth is also here. I'm gonna be happy to answer any questions. I can tell you that our intention at this point is to take the comments that you have today. And incorporate them into our phase one. And then move to see what type of pricing we can get from contractors. And if we get a good bids, we will bring them back, bring the bids back to the board for your recommendation on whether we move forward with a contractor or not. So with that. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you go back to the screen? Supervisor, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know that we spoke about this last week and about French Landing and the potential it has and. You know, I'm a champion of making improvements. As you drive by that, it's unsightly. Those buildings look awful. And when I walked it a few, I, I think it was a year or two ago, it, there was beer cans and beer bottles and. Other unmentionable items, you know, it just, it wasn't to its potential. So I don't want that, you know, this park needs an overhaul. But I have to also say, and I'm, you know, I'm all for making improvements to that park. But when it was in, so I don't want to take away from what we're trying to accomplish here. But I have to say that I thought we were going to have a discussion tonight and, you know. Shout out some ideas and get a feeling for what everybody thought, but this turned from a discussion into a. To a full presentation and I feel like I'm behind the eight ball here. I feel I'm at a disadvantage. Because I didn't receive any information about a kayak launch or phase one and. You went into landscaping and fencing and, you know, we didn't talk about playground equipment, but I'm sure we will and, you know, all the work that. You, you had ideas for in different phases, but I feel that. This should have been a presentation and we should have gotten something on this because obviously you have something, you've had. Lot more discussion on this than what I thought, so I, I don't want to take away from the project. Of course I support it, but I feel this. We were behind here in getting information and I, I didn't like it. I didn't appreciate it. That's just me personally. I'm not speaking for the board.
I'm going to answer this one, Matt, because you're absolutely one hundred percent right. All right, the, the point of this discussion was exactly what you thought it was supposed to be. We have not approved any of these plans at all. These are the ones that we just had to try and come up with a concept and probably a year old. So the idea, they should have been in your packet and, and, and any ideas you guys have to. Add to this, we will add it and we will incorporate it. We will bring this back again before we go back out to bid. Because that was the plan of what this was going to be.
If I may add one more thing, I don't want this to take away. Also, I know it's going to be quite costly, but. I want, what we should be equally concerned with is the community center as well because you, you know how the residents spoke on behalf of that. So that needs to be also equally important and we need to give our attention to that as well and I think I should mention that.
Promise that I will, that community center is, I, I have not wavered one bit on the fact. That I initially did not want it and have no choice but to build it and it will not, I will not stall. I will not do anything. I will build exactly what I am told. Exactly the way you, the board told me to do it. And I will do that and eighty percent of our community wants it. We are going to do it. Okay?
And you, you did realize that. I know you came to fruition with that where you saw.
Working on this park because it is an eyesore and it is.
It's horrible.
Forty percent of our community drives by that park every day. And to have it look like that, I mean, that is just a, that is a black eye on our face. The moment people get off that freeway, so it's gotta be fixed.
Supervisor McNamara?
Director Best and Trustee Martin.
So this is the third time we've brought the plans, the, the master plan to the board. The first time we met in September or two, two thousand, or actually March of two thousand nineteen, we talked briefly about this. Before we put together the master plan. In September of two thousand nineteen, we actually went over the document that I showed you that had the master plan on it. In March of twenty twenty, we brought to the board. The, the, the tree cutting and planting plans as well as the. A second cut of the master plan based on the comments the board had brought up. And the only thing that phase one that we're talking about today that we're presenting is doing. Is the re, basically the re-establishment of the pavement, the re-establishment of the landscaping. The improved landscaping based on the master plan that the board made comment on, on two separate occasions. With this bones, the bare bones of the park now. That we have this laid out, the ideas can flow from that for what else we can do with these spaces. And that's why this presentation, this discussion was so important. Park is, and you're, and trustee Miller, you're absolutely right. The recreation center is going to take significant capital to put together. Over the last two years, we have scraped together the capital needed to do. To re-improve, to, to improve the bare bones of this part, park to bring it up to a, a usable level for our residents. Without breaking the bank. And because of some of the natural and unnatural challenges on the site, such as the. The transformer station with DTE as well as significant overhead wiring. We're very limited in what we can change and do as well as the existing. Two hundred thousand dollar bathroom building and adjacent engineered septic field. We're very limited to what we can do and so. That's why the bare bones of the sidewalks, the access points to the water. The improvements to the pavement, those things are really the minimum things that we needed to do to get the site safe and up to speed. And that's what we presented in phase one. And that's why phase two and phase three are very important. To get your input on because those.
About phase one for right now.
Right, but that's my phase two. Are the ones that really are the idea phases.
Yeah.
And that's why the question is, is there.
I have trustee Martin and then I.
Well, I want to respond to that if I may.
Okay.
Director Best. And I appreciate your, your feedback and how it's come before the board, the master plan, and I get that. But it's like what we talked about last week when things are presented to us where it was like. Let me give you an example. Well, we, it was in the budget, so, you know, it's in the budget, so why can't we do it? Well, you need feedback from the board and this is crucial to the development. And again, I want to state that. Just because it's in the master plan, it's been talked about here and there. Is not a reason to not give us sufficient paperwork for this presentation tonight.
Okay, so, okay, and, and as supervisor, I'm already acknowledging that, that, that you did not have sufficient paperwork. That should have been, it should have been in the works.
Thank you.
So trustee Martin.
Yes. I, I remember we having discussions as a body about French Landing Park some months ago. And I also remember that we were getting a grant from, from the county, from Wayne County. Did we get that grant money or is that still in the works? I think it was a substantial amount of money.
I'll let Matt say something that people will like to hear.
So we have, we have secured through the Wayne County's. Village program and through the work of supervisor McNamara and commissioner Al Hadis. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars of money for this park project as well as. In twenty, 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 twenty-one season, we have been awarded thirty-two thousand and change. From the Wayne County Village Project for this project. So we are up to a hundred and fifty some, some thousand dollars.
About a hundred and eighty thousand.
Also.
Hundred, I'm sorry. Eighty thousand, thank you Elizabeth.
Also remember, part of that conversation was you were talking about signage and I, I recall that. Wayne County wanted to have their name on the sign some type of way. So we haven't forgotten about that, have we?
Yeah, they do get their name on, on a plaque or something inside of there and they will. We put their name on, we put their name on anything we do with Wayne County.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, French Landing Park is, we, we've talked about it for a long time and it, it does need a facelift. And I, I look forward to working with the. With your department director best to come up with the best plan for, get the biggest bang for our buck for that, for that landing. I'm a big fan of green spaces and the fact that you want to irrigate it and keep it, keep it plush and lush, I, I appreciate that part. I think the residents appreciate it too.
Clerk Wright? Yeah, yeah. As the liaison of the park and recreation committee. I do understand trustee Miller exactly what you're saying about, you know, not having the plants, but I'm not gonna. I'm not going to complain because I've seen twelve years of, of nothing done to the parks. Pretty much and now we are investing monies into it. I really would, would love to see that concept come to reality because. I know I've, what, twenty-four years, I've drove by twenty-four years and it's been the same. Eyesore, so I'm ecstatic to see something. This magnitude put down to the parks, maybe we can transcend some of that. I like that, I like the sketch of the. Of the. The shed, not the shed, but you know, the pavilion. Maybe we can use that concept in some of the other parks. Maybe even behind the township with another pavilion once we are. Get this beautiful. Recreation center built. So. I, I'm ecstatic, so of course I, I've been saying a long time, I'm glad to see that we can put some money into the parks. Because I always thought that if you, if you build it, they will come, so. I'm, I'm glad to see this, director best and supervisor, I know you've been working with the county. And it was a lot of stuff that we haven't been able to get in the past. And I know with your vision, some, without your connection, we wouldn't be getting a lot of this. These are bonds and funds and. And our monies that we're getting, so I appreciate, I know we all appreciate that. Thank you too.
Kind of you. Trustee Fraser, you look like you were about to speak. No, you're unmute, okay. All right, is there, is there any other questions? Okay, just to be clear. This, this is a work in progress. You will see it one more time, okay? And, and, and I. I, I, I missed that there was going to be an actual architectural rendering and I. I, I actually been very busy the last two days and so is Matt and, and, and we've been working everybody into the ground and I, I missed this in this file. That it was not.
One quick thing I want to add, will there be playground equipment at some phase in, in this park?
As I understand, the answer to that one is currently no, but go ahead, Mr. Best.
The, the users of the park is identified. When, when we went through and looked at it, the playground equipment was not really utilized at the rate that some of our other parks were. So the focus of playground equipment at Van Buren Park and Quirk Park is our focuses for recreation for children as. And, and the user for these parks are more passive recreation, fishing, picnicking. Recreational activities, classes, meetings, things like that. So that's why when we remove the, the rotted out structure that was there. One of the reasons we didn't know it was rotted is because no one had been using it and complaining about it.
I literally pushed it. And it fell down. I mean, beams, four by four beams rotted right through.
I remember.
Yeah, kids hadn't been on that thing in years.
So one of, supervisor, one of the things that our team asks, the public services team is now asking for is. You know, and I ask this every time, any ideas that you have for this park, any ideas on the improvements? You can send them to me. One of the reasons we're going to be, we'll be emailing you this package. We hadn't really, to, to be completely honest, a lot of the stuff we're doing. Like the estimate we did today, thanks to Mark working very hard to, to get the estimate done, so. This package is now together and ready and we still have time, our idea to add ideas and I, and add pieces. But really, the main, the big, the big ticket items, the big flare uses. The things that really make these parks are phase two, phase three, phase four items and so. This is just the pathways, the landscaping, the sidewalks. This isn't the things that we really need to help with. So at this point, if you have any ideas, please share them with us. We'll be happy to add those and, and, and put those into play.
Just one quick question if I may, will the Iron Bell Trail, can this be used as. Pathway through this, this park? Has that been looked at? Now that you're going to fix it up and it's going to be gorgeous and I can't wait to, to see the results of this, but is there any way to. To have that Iron Bell Trail come through there?
To that, there are two ways to go there. One is to cross that bridge and that's, that's got the oil pipeline on it. And that would be a million, two million dollar route to try and fix that, to make it passable. The other way would be go, just to go down Hagerty Road and use the current easements that are there. But I think you've got to cross a railroad and I don't think that they're very friendly to doing that. So the answer is no, not under our budget.
All right.
Anybody else? I just want to make sure we understood this and the. I just want to make sure we understood this and the reason we brought it forward, quite frankly, and I've told my trustees this is because I know that come January, the community center is going to dominate everybody's thoughts. But I don't want you to forget that we have probably, we have a park that literally can effects the wealth of our community because it looks so crummy, it actually drives housing prices down. We are trying to make this park nice so that housing prices
Go up.
Money for our residents. And yes, government is a business, we need to get our cost of living inflation. Or else we don't succeed. So as long as they're making money, we're fine. Let's see, I haven't, that's it, we have no vote on this, can we, should we just move on?
Yes.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is discussion and to consider approval of an amendment. Can I get a motion and somebody want to read, actually? I I'd like, I'd like to make this amendment, but I'd like to add ten thousand dollars to that number to make that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, I was gonna offer to make the motion.
I'd like to know what the ten thousand added is.
As chairman, I can make a motion and I'll read, I'll read it, I'll read it and add it all in. I would like to make the motion to approve to consider approval, I would, for the approval of an amendment to the twenty twenty amended budget. Line item one oh one nine five five dash zero zero zero, which is our COVID nineteen expense, expense line item to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. With necessary transfer from fund balance to cover the expenditures of hazardous payouts to all township employees and township closure payouts for the public safety and account for direct mailing and postage for masks for masks to all township residents.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have support. McNamara made motion. So what we've got is I don't even tell story. So what we've got is we basically, let's start the, what this motion was originally. We have, we have a, we have a police forces probably, I hate to say this, but we probably are actually today, probably have thirty percent of our force has had COVID. We've had it in dispatch, we've had it in fire, we've had it in our building here. It is not a safe and easy place to live. A lot of people have been giving surplus bonus hazard pays and things like that at two and three dollars a person. That counts to a lot of money. The the full time electives and talked to the board before we did this got together and the unions requested some of these kind of extras, including extra vacation pay because of of how hazardous it's become to work. We don't need to do this. But I think it's the right thing to do. And the proposal that the board has kind of told me that they'd be okay with is five hundred dollars to each employee that's non-public safety and fifteen hundred dollars to public safety employees for the year to basically say, thank you for being frontline on this. Now, we have been very we've, 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 we've come out very well in the grant world. We probably, even with this payout, are probably running a few two, three hundred thousand dollars ahead of our normal expenses in the grant world of COVID. So yes, we can afford it. Yeah, but it's a matter of, you know, if you want to do this, I I believe that since I made the motion that I'd like to make this payout for our employees. That's step one, we'll talk about that and then I'll tell you about the ten thousand dollars in a minute, okay? Anybody else want to comment on it?
After Sheri, I'd like to comment.
I agree. I'll just be just that simple.
Okay. You go ahead, Reggie. Yes.
So that's, that's terribly alarming to hear those percentages and and that many people, that many of our our staff affected by COVID. That being said, are we giving this extra five hundred dollars to every single employee in Van Buren Township? And is that including the ones, say for instance, that were furloughed? Like Parks and Rec, are they getting this benefit as well?
We thought about that, we decided yes, because there's only two Parks and Rec employees and they quite frankly, were working frontline for most of the year. There are a couple of new employees that started on in October, November, and we are only going to prorate those two numbers.
And if you can talk about the ten thousand dollars, thank you for that supervisor, if you can talk about the ten thousand dollars as to why it's needed and what it will go for in detail.
So okay, last week Dearborn said that they were going to send masks to all their, all their citizens. And I saw that, thought that's pretty darn nice, that's pretty darn expensive, there's a hundred thousand people in Dearborn. So I asked Dan, that, that Thursday, Friday, I told Dan, there's gotta be a grant out there, there's no way in hell they did it on their own. Said, Dan, go out and find those masks, find those grants and so called me over the weekend and says, Wayne County's got some masks, he says, I'm gonna go pick them up, he says, but I haven't found out where they got those things yet. He showed up at the office about, about five thousand masks from Wayne County. I said, where'd you get this? He says, they've got a warehouse. At any rate, it turns out Wayne County has a warehouse and it's starting to roll out a program, I believe. We're so early on to it, but I think Dearborn was the first one that was offered it for spikes that were happening there. Long story short, we are now processing, we, we, we ran down there and the clerk and the treasurer approved me making lots of moves and provided people and and a lot of other stuff because this was a nightmare. We closed all of our accounts and we had to reopen everything, the accounting. But we ran a couple pickup trucks down there, in fact, I had my pickup truck home with me. And we walked in to get some more gloves, some more masks and told them we wanted forty thousand masks. They kind of looked at us and they said, okay. So we've got, we're processing forty thousand masks right now. We need the ten thousand dollars to pay for the postage, the envelopes, the stamps, whatever, the the labels. We'll get everything ready by Christmas to be put together, our employees that are working from home will will be given masks and envelopes and they'll stuff them and stamp, stuff them and seal them. And I'd say by January fifteenth, we should have a three masks to every single solitary house in Van Buren Township. The management companies are going to handle the dispersal of the masks to all the rental agents, rentals, units and the mobile home parks are going to get through the management. So we got masks.
So what you're, what you're saying is that you've got masks and you're going to be distributing it to all our township residents?
Yes, everybody.
And so will this money be able to be recovered through another grant and how much is the township paying out the general fund to cover the cost for the the mask distribution? Because it's more than ten thousand, I think that needs to be explained.
Okay, so it's about ten thousand dollar, it's about seventeen thousand. And of that seventeen thousand, seven thousand's postage, which I think is fully get backable. The other ten thousand dollars is we're going to be putting Van Buren logo on them. So that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee pointed.
No, 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 I'm sorry, you saw me raise my hand, I was waving at my wife.
The reason we wanted in this, the seven thousand in this line item is because we're not done going after grants, we're actively going after grants right now. And this is fully mailing masks on is fully one hundred percent reimbursable.
So we'll get, we'll recover these expenses, we're just putting the money upfront right now.
I can't, I can't promise it, but we've been doing pretty well. Yes.
Been wanting to speak supervisor. Sheri Frazier's been wanting to speak.
You're now muted.
Hi Becky.
Sheri, you're still muted. Frazier.
Okay, now you can hear me. So is there a reason why the residents can't come in and pick up mask? To mail them?
They won't do it, but if you think about it, it's only costing about, what? It only costs us about thirty cents a mask. Forty, forty cents a mask when he, when he added all up. Hands in their houses, so, and they're nice masks. They're double, they're the nicest masks I've ever seen. They're double woven, they've got adjustments for your ears. They've got the metal nose piece.
Be mailed?
Every single resident, yes.
I don't know. I I'm not, you know. I'm not, if they want to come in and pick one up, it could be free and no charge. And they could pick one up for their neighbor or whatever, I, I don't know. Anybody else have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, the only drawback that I see on it is the fact that there's a virus running around right now. I don't leave the house. I haven't been to work since March eighteenth.
What about your mail? It's got a virus on it too.
Hey, I sprayed, honestly, I sprayed the mail when it comes to the house. I have a little bottle, squirt bottle of alcohol. Every single delivery that comes to the house, I spray it on all sides, I let it dry and then I tear it open. We're not spraying the mask itself, but we're spraying the packaging around it.
The idea is to get the mask in their hands, I mean
I don't see a problem with it at all.
Through chair.
Yes, Clerk Wright.
Is, I understand, trustee Frazier, I think we talked about it, the the discussion was to try to get every resident a mask and you know it it came, it became challenging if we, if you to treat, to reach every resident, a lot of people listens, some people listen to us, a lot of people see us on social media. Some people see, see us on different venues, but then you have a, you have a, you have a sector out there that just don't see us at all. And if we want to reach everyone with this pandemic. Like, like trustee Boyne, you say, we want to reach everyone, we want, we're trying to get everyone, give everyone a mask and in order to do that there's no other way but to just send everybody a mask, because you would never get everybody to know that we're giving it. No matter what kind of program, social media program we ran out. We would never get everyone to know that we have masks given, that we're giving away. So if we want to reach every household to make sure everyone has a mask, which I I agree, we need to do. I don't know if anybody started the governor today. We, we actually like we're going down a little bit because of the content that's being put out there. You know, I'm a big component is that education, education is the key. As a board, as leaders, the more we educate, if we, if we continue to do that the majority will listen, you're gonna have some that's gonna stray off, but the majority will listen and the majority are used and wear the mask and that's what we want to do, we, I mean, vaccine is being rolled out. We still have some things we got to do before everyone before enough people get vaccinated in order to reach thirty million, so we still need people to wear masks until the whole seventy percent of the people get vaccinated, hopefully we can get there. But if anything that I think as a board that we can do to encourage that, we need to be doing that. So I, I, I think this is a good program, I think it's a great program, that's on, we're gonna get it in their hands.
Through the chair.
Yes, trustee.
So are we sending it to people on our tax records or people on the voter registration, exactly how are we contacting these households? Is it based on the tax records or what?
Okay, yeah, the tax records, because the tax records don't duplicate on a house. And quite frankly, when we unduplicate, we we miss. It's like you getting election stuff from you and for Will or whoever else in the house. Sometimes you'll get five or six pieces in your, in your house. It's because it's just very tough to clean those things up. So yes, we're going off tax record. And that would get
Supervisor, just one more thing, if we can give five hundred dollars to every single employee in Van Buren Township, then we could provide a mask that we send out mail out to our residents. So it's about minimizing the risk, we've talked about this, we've advocated for it. I want to see money come in to to cover this expense and and I, I'm, I have the most confidence in Supervisor McNamara to recover this cost. So with that, I I support it.
I do know that there's a new FEMA and the new CARES Act money coming through the Congress and it will probably come out around a week after January twentieth. And we're already tracking that money and when it hits Wayne County and the state of Michigan, we'll we'll be in line to fix some of this, I'm sure, but
And how did Dearborn distribute these? Did they mail them?
Mail.
All right, and they have for one hundred thousand residents.
Hundred thousand residents, that's here, whenever you see something like that in the newspaper, know there was a grant behind it because that's expensive.
It is, it is, thank you.
Anybody else?
We just want, supervisor, we just want to keep our residents safe and our community functioning as best we can, but the important thing is to minimize this, this virus.
And I have to say this because this has got to be said. I texted Warren Evans when I found, when I got all these, these masks. And I, and I actually called Al Hitis, but I got to thank Warren Evans and Commissioner Hitis. They have been putting out really usable, business friendly grants that our businesses are able to get at. They've done that two or three rounds, they just put out a grant for five hundred dollars for restaurant workers, movie theater workers, a personal grant, they can actually get it on their own. I saw twelve thousand people signed up for it, they didn't have enough money, he found more money, it sounds like, to cover those people. Yeah, so and now we've got, now I see these masks. I gotta say that the county, as far as I'm concerned, is killing it, are leading this, leading, being good leaders, so.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right, so hearing note for the discussion. Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Boyne.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Butt.
Yes.
Yes, for me, Supervisor McNamara.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Just one more thing I'd like to add, I'd like the residents to know that the the township board of trustees is not getting five hundred extra dollars for hazard pay.
No elected.
Make that clear.
No elected.
No elected official.
Yeah, you're right, good point. All right, reports are none, public comment for non agenda items. Does moderator, is there anybody that wants to make public comment?
Doesn't look like any at this time.
Does the board want to make any comment?
Through the chair.
Trustee Martin.
Can you give us an update on the Hagerty Road Bridge and when it may open, when it may or may not open?
Reggie Miller gave an excellent update. I was, she did it, I'll let her.
So I reached out, I, I've been advocating for this bridge for a few years now, as most of you know. I had a conversation with our commissioner, Al Hitis, and he, he communicated to me that the bridge, they're planning on opening it according to the engineering department that he spoke with the week of Christmas. So keep your fingers crossed and I take pictures and I update, it looks great, folks, so I'm, I'm excited. the week of Christmas, so keep your fingers crossed and I take pictures and I update, it looks great, folks, so I'm, I'm excited, I so many people use that bridge, so it'll be soon.
Yeah, and I met with the lady that, that did that and uh and Matt Best met with her and he got the same text and he sent, sent it to me that she said it'd be open by Christmas.
Did we get the walkway for the Iron Bell Trail that we wanted?
Nope, we got a small six foot uh on the, on the wrong side of the road. Why they did that, you have to actually walk down under the bridge. And I, I had to stop arguing when I saw that, there, there is a massive amount of superstructure changes you would have to do to move that other side. I didn't understand it until I saw it, so. Is there anybody else that wants to make comment?
Through the chair.
Uh treasurer Bud and then
I just would like to remind everyone again, the treasurer's open office will be on December thirtieth from nine to five by the tax law, so that we will be there to collect taxes. They can still be put in the drop box out front, they can be put in the drop box in the police lobby. Anything that is picked up when we return to work on January the fourth will be credited back to the year twenty twenty. But we will be open. Once again, we will have a door screener at the door to take temperatures and ask the questions. No other office in the township will be open, so that is the only business that will be conducted that day.
Clerk, right?
Uh I would just like to encourage everyone out there to uh wear a mask and be safe, wash your hands and adhere to the uh discretion in regards to the CDC and the Michigan State State Health Department, and I think, I want to challenge the board to be more vigilant and posting on your websites and your social media platforms and encourage the public to do the same. Uh we, we got to do what we need to do as leaders to encourage the, our constituents to do the same, and I think that's our responsibility, responsibility as leaders. I, I was in the uh, I was, I was in my Saturday with my wife and we thought we was waiting later in the day and to go in and do, grab a couple of things. And it wasn't a lot of people in there, but we was, I was surprised to see uh the people that was in there, I saw at least three or four people walking around and there were no masks on. And got in line to pay our, to pay for our groceries. And I noticed the gentleman standing in front of me had his back turned, but when he turned around to pay for his, his grocery, he didn't have a mask on. So I my wife and I were associated, we were standing back, we had our mask on. But the, the look on the clerk's face when I walked, we walked up to pay for our grocery. And the gentleman was talking to him, he didn't have a mask on, then had the audacity to be talking to him and up, standing up over the screen, talking down at the clerk. I mean, not talking down at him, but he was taller gentleman, he, he was standing over the, the screen that was there. There's supposed to have been the, you know, the protection. Talking to the clerk, the clerk was standing back, you can see he was frantic. The young kid, when I got up, all he told me, he says, sir, he said, I didn't know what to do, he said, I, I never felt so uncomfortable in my life. I need my job, but I don't understand why people don't uh, it's so self, so selfish. He said, he had no respect for me. I couldn't, I can't walk off of my job, I have to check out his grocery, you would think that he would wear a mask. I said, young man, you are, you exactly right, he should, he should respect you if he don't respect nobody else. We talk about going into the grocery store and I don't, and I, and if, I hear people say, well, if people in the grocery store can can, can go out and what, why can't everybody else? Well, they want to work because they have to, but for you to come in there with not a mask on and not protect him, if you don't want to protect yourself, that's one thing, but not protecting the you, you know, the person that's working there is totally selfish. And I, I shared this on my post, a lot of, I said, a lot of people, people agree with me. And, and the next thing I'm gonna say is that the vaccines are rolling out. Everybody had a differences in saying they're not gonna get vaccinated or want to see, but maybe, I think it's the right thing to do, to step up and get vaccinated and what, for us to do it and show the people that it needs, it, it's something that needs to be done. Like I said, if you don't know what's going on, research look it up, do the research, see who was leading this program, see who's behind it, get the data. And if we, we can sit here and watch our healthcare workers that took care of us and still are taking care of us, roll up their sleeve and get injected, and we can do the same and stop sending them what, what we're not gonna do. If they can do it they started vaccinating yesterday, they had a young lady on Good Morning American this morning. She was a head nurse. She said she had nothing but no symptoms other than a sore a little soreness at the air, area that the needle went in, and that's, it's been over twenty-four hours ago. These people are not only rolling up their sleeve, getting vaccinated, but they are on the frontline every day taking care of us, the ill, and even some of our families that has been there. And the most we can do is stand out and if not only encourage people to take the vaccine but show that as leaders that we'll take the vaccine, I know I, I'm gonna be first in line, soon as I, they tell me that I can take it because I believe in the science. I don't trust the va- I don't trust the virus. And I definitely would trust the vaccine before I trust the virus. I think it's a catch twenty there, you gotta think about, I mean what, if you're gonna take a chance, I would definitely rather take a chance on the vaccine and take a chance on catching COVID. I have seen it, I've got people, I have relatives that lost their life. I've had relatives that dealt with it, I know, I know a young lady now is in a coma, been in a coma for six months. Uh it's nothing that nobody wants to take a chance, roll the dice on, and that's what you're doing, you're rolling the dice. I thought I had to say this and I will be saying it again until we get out of this pandemic, it's our job to be leaders and show, and talk to the people, encourage the, the uh business owners to do what they need to do to make sure people wear masks when they come in their facility. Thank you.
Well I'll be real quick. This is probably the last meeting for the year, so I will say to all of my board members here tonight. All of the um committees and commissions that are also on the Zoom meetings and uh throughout the township to all the township employees, to the exec, uh to all the managers and directors and to the public at large. Please know that I wish all of you the happiest and greatest tidings in this wonderful holiday season. May God bless every single one of you. And I look forward to pushing on in the new year with every single one of you. Merry Christmas and the happiest of new years.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Yeah. Christmas everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry.
Be safe, wear the masks and God bless our public safety.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I make motion to adjourn.
Don Boynton, second, um here, no dissent, I call as adjourned.
Merry Christmas.